I'd like to call this meeting on the Region 15 Board of Education order for Tuesday, May 27th. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God. The mission of Region 15, a collaborative community committed to excellence, will pay every student to be productive, ethical, and engaged in a global society with proven and innovative learning experiences supported by a strong community whose decision-making is based in the best interest of all students. We'll start with our student representatives. Oh, Mr. Brendan.
All right. Good evening, board. As you can see, Tess was unable to make the meeting tonight, so I will be very prepared for her report. All right. So starting off with Pop Rock High, the senior yearbook banquet is this Friday, May 30th, as well as the drama senior showcase. The senior and junior prom is this Sunday, June 1st at the Oxford. Academic awards and scholarship night take place on June 5th. Exams will start on June 6th, as well as the class of 2025 top 10 brunch and the jazz band, chamber orchestra, and chamber singers concert. The spring athletic celebration will take place on June 7th and the tentative last stage school is June 12th. Moving on to the middle schools, just want to say a big thank you to the music department and all band, chorus, and orchestra students for their fantastic, well-attended concerts last week at MMS. The RMS 7th and 8th grade concert will be held on Thursday, May 29th. Also from the music department, select ensemble students participated in the grills and trills festival in Massachusetts, performing an exciting event and celebrating after at Six Flags. The eighth graders are presenting their year-long capsule projects this week, but they focus on community service. And then, as you guys were talking earlier, thank you for the PTO for hosting the annual RMS and MMS class tonight. We had class tonight when I was in game field. It's always an exciting event, so. Also at RMS, they held their first annual golf adding at Campbell Farms last week, which was a great opportunity for students and staff to enjoy and have to know the course. And then a series of award recipients were held within the past two weeks to honor middle school students for strong academic performance, leadership, and service to the greater school community. This includes the CAS Scholar Leader Award, as well as the Mitchfield County and Western County Superintendent Awards. Moving on to the elementary schools, fourth and fifth grade band, orchestra, and chorus concerts have been taking place. Second graders had an exciting field trip to Beaufort Hill School. Sback testing has been taking place, I believe it's completed by now. And there's also been a exciting field day events taking place at elementary schools. At GES, students and staff celebrated the World Day for Cultural Diversity last week. At LMES, fourth graders met local NBC weatherman, Ryan Anahan, and at PES kindergarteners. Their baby ducks have started hatching, which has brought a lot of excitement to their classrooms. Moving on to the athletics department, SWCs and states will be taking place the next few weeks for spring sports. And exciting news from Pop Rocks Athletic Leadership Council, they will be partnering up with the National Honor Society to host the Pop Rock Olympics on June 7th to raise can cause for the Pop Rock. Good job.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions for? Next, we have a student recognition. Turn it over to Superintendent Smith.
Identify.
We can start with the keyboard. Should I just go over there?
I apologize. I don't ever interrupt, but could we do that in reverse because one of the cable recipients is currently on lacrosse trip coming back and will be here in just a couple of minutes.
That sounds great.
All right. All right. So each year, the Western Connecticut and the Mitchfield Connecticut Superintendent's Group recognize students for not only their academic achievement, but also their leadership and their community engagement. As a region, we recognize two students at the high school and two students from each middle school. Middle schoolers will be here next week because I heard they're hosting tonight. The award recipients, both the Western Connecticut group and the Mitchfield Connecticut group are prized of about 12 school districts from their G-Rac regions, and we held banquets where these students were recognized. Statewide, about 1% of students get recognized for this award, so it's a pretty exclusive club. To be a one percenter when you're in middle and high school is a pretty good achievement. Really invite Dr. Jones up here to talk specifically about the student. I'm going to call the student up and have him stand while I have to go speak. So we can start with Alice Sugden. Alice wants to come up. Goes in the camera right there. Scream around the world.
So Alex Sugden, Alice Sugden is a phenomenal senior. One of the things that stands out is when I talk to the counselors and I talk to people who knew her even better than some is her kind heart, but passionate drive to do things the right way. And so she spent a lot of time in theater. How many Hailas were just involved with? Marnie?
I have one specific, but the figure showed.
Correct. Okay, so she's a very accomplished lesbian. We're very proud of the work she's done. But when you talk to her counselor and you talk to the teachers who know her, it's really easy to see her as the leader who's behind the scenes driving people forward. She's not always the one who's going to be the one in front of the camera that you're there. But when you talk to these people, you talk to the teachers and students who know her, her compassionate drive and her kind heart absolutely puts her in that 1%. So congrats.
Second Western Connecticut Award winner is Dylan Nudar.
So as I said, Alice is a very quiet spoken but loud behind the scenes. Dylan is the opposite. And no, I add the utmost respect for Dylan and what he's done as a student leader. Again, when you talk to his counselor, you talk to his teachers, you talk to his peers. He's a positive voice. He's able to keep people motivated even when it's tough to be motivated. When you look at what he did, both in soccer and in school this year, on our boys soccer team who played in one of the longest state championship games in the history of the state of Connecticut, keeping his team going along with his teammate Brendan sitting right there, but keeping his team going, being a leader there while still maintaining leadership in the school, especially with POM Center and the Athletic Council this year, really trying to move those things forward. Very proud of it. And again, very deserving to be in that 1% in the state of Connecticut.
We have two other Mitchfield County Award winners. They, one is on a field trip but not back yet, another had commitments as all these high-powered seniors have. But I just wanted to recognize them and have Dr. Go and say a couple of words. Tessu Beavers is the first award representative. So congratulate this Tessu.
Steve, you will not find a more creative student than Tessu. She has both helped create murals throughout the school as the leader of our Honor Society. And her vision and creativity has again helped us bring the school together closer through POM Center. I'd say more if she was standing here to try to embarrass her more about that, but she is absolutely a phenomenal student and again, very deserving.
And our other student, you'll hear speak at graduation, that Somnia Dog is the other recipient.
Reason you'll hear her speak at graduation is she is our class of 2025 valedictorian. Absolutely phenomenal student, but I've also gotten to work with her at Student Council and as we've rewritten Student Council to be more of a executive board that really oversees student life here. I can't speak more highly of her challenging herself to think outside the box and really help us grow that. And I think those who've been involved with things this year can speak to Somnia's leadership. So congrats again to her.
It was just a pleasure to have those students represent us. At this point, I will turn it over to the chair.
So I am very honored to be announcing the CADE Award recipients. CADE is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And they give out an award to students who show distinguished leadership qualities. And they seek nominations from the school administration to provide who might be a recipient of this award. We have two award recipients tonight. And the first one, I see, this must be you because you're the lacrosse player, so. Remembering a little something what they said about you. I thought it was pretty impressive. Anna has truly established herself as a standout student since her sophomore year, consistently embodying the qualities of leadership and reliability. She warmly welcomes new students, meeting them on their first day, guiding them with enthusiasm as they navigate their schedules, and extending heartfelt invitations to join her and her friends for lunch. Her friendly demeanor and willingness to help ease their transition makes a world of difference to those who are just starting out. In addition to supporting her peers, Anna has also taken on the role of ambassador for our school. She's an accompany people to middle schools, engaging with eighth graders to share insights about the high school experience. And her ability to connect with younger students and offer thoughtful advice showcases her maturity and genuine compassion for helping others. Throughout high school, Anna has covered a deep aspiration to become a teacher. And she has taken proactive steps toward that goal by shadowing a middle school teacher for a day. This allowed her to gain an invaluable firsthand knowledge of classroom dynamics and teaching methods. Furthermore, Anna proudly serves as captain of her lacrosse team, a position that not only highlights her athletic prowess, but also her commitment to fostering teamwork among her teammates. Her multifaceted involvement exemplifies her remarkable leadership qualities and her dedication to both her personal growth and the well-being of those around her. Very well deserved. Second recipient is standing right behind me. Henry is an exceptionally dedicated and accomplished student who consistently stands out in the classroom. Despite advice to consider more balanced force load, he made a bold decision to enroll in a full-scheduled classes during his junior year, which included multiple AP and high-level courses. This choice proved to be a remarkable achievement, as he not only managed to navigate these demanding subjects, but excelled in maintaining a stellar G P A. Outside the classroom, Henry continues to impress with his extensive involvement in extracurricular activities. He is an active member of the Palm Theater Company, where he has honed his artistic talents and leadership skills. Additionally, he serves as the captain of the trap and a field and cross-country teams, where he demonstrates both his athletic prowess and ability to lead his peers. His commitment to excellence is further reflected in his participation in several honor societies and clubs, showcasing his well-rounded nature and dedication to communities' engagement. The combination of Henry's diverse resume, balancing academic, athletics, and the arts, while consistently achieving high marks, is a testament to his resilience, his time management skills, and passion for learning. His impressive achievements not only highlight his capabilities as a student, but also forecast a bright future as a productive and successful adult. We have no doubt that he will continue to make significant contributions in whatever path he chooses. Congratulations. It's back to recording our meetings and making sure everything goes smoothly. All right. Next, may I have a motion for approval of the May 12th, 2025 regular meeting minutes?
Thank you.
So, thank you. So I have a second. Second by Sally. All right. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any nades? Any extensions? Thank you. Next, we have information proposals, board committee reports, policy and curriculum committee, Ms. Heather Quire.
Policy and curriculum this evening. It was our last meeting of the year. We will not be moving on to one. To the disappointment of them. We have been moving at a good clip. So just this evening, we moved six policies forward. They will first be reviewed by Gabe and then come forward as school board, and we're all under the heading of student discipline. Coming to a meeting next year. Next. Today is also the second week. Couple more somber policies that we did at first read up on our last meeting. 1180, memorials for deceased students and staff. This was a policy. I think I introduced it last time, but it was a policy that was had a lot of input from a lot of different sources. Our Director of Student Services, counseling, crisis intervention teams. We really shuck this one around to make sure that it was conscientious for any of our families, staff, who may be involved in this type of scenario. Are there, you know, I hope everyone has read it. Are there any questions? This will come up for a vote later.
Thank you. And next, we have the script and its reports.
You'll notice above you are three white orbs. They are currently not fully functioning. But we have reached out for additional support. And we're working on getting rid of the cables and wiring of the audio in the middle of the floor. Those will replace it. It will simplify the audio system in here as well. You see a black box in the back on the wall that will house all the equipment, so it won't be set up and tear down each meeting. And hopefully that will fix all of the audio. It is not functional tonight. I hope that it will be fully installed by next, definitely by our next meeting. Then we also have plans to work some of the display so that the neck craning that happened with the presentations can be softened. Legislative update, our friends in Hartford are very busy. We're approaching the end of the session. The language that we've been watching specific to the school construction has continued to work its way through the process and is still active. There is there are two specific bills that have a lot of language around special education. And I feel for our friends in Hartford because we are frustrated when they do nothing. We want some solutions and some relief. And then when they propose them, we criticize the, so I'm fully aware of the hypocrisy of the process. That being said, I'm both optimistic and concerned about some of the language. It will be probably mid-July before we're able to measure one, if these pass, and what the impact specific to us is. I do appreciate the recognition of the problem, but I do feel that some treatment may be worse than the element, but we shall see and remain optimistic that at least there's movement and engagement in that process, but it could have some negative financial impact to the region next year. And that's really what we're trying to calculate. Last Thursday, we had our community meeting around the V E S and G E S school building study. We all attended. We did film. The audio is working. It's online, as is the presentation. That was the third of the community series. That'll include the community side. The last committee meeting is, I'm gonna say, June 3rd, but it could be the 4th. And that will be here. If you plan on attending graduation or either promotion ceremonies at the middle school and have not already let us know, let us know and make sure you have a seat. And that is June 14th, this graduation. And then lastly, for the high school. Yeah. For the two middle schools. And we have a lot of really powerful people in this district. They do a tremendous job. It's always nice when that work is recognized. Our high school yearbook last year is recognized for its creativity and the cover around Monopoly. So it's always nice when we're highlighted on the website and recognized for the hard work happening here. I think we have a lot of yearbooks that were qualified, but officially, last year is recognized. So I just want to give a a little praise to the high school students and the staff that worked really hard to produce that yearbook. It is a multi-year process to get that produced. Just wanted to look into that. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? So now that the community conversation's been finalized, the committee meeting, the committee is gonna be, the final meeting is happening. Remind me again, then, what the next steps are.
So as it stands now, the committee will turn over its recommendation to the board along with, at this point, all of the research and backup is, I think, all available on the website. So they will send it over kind of how they reach that conclusion. And then the board will decide what to do with that next.
Do we know when that will come to the board?
All I have right now is I, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I know that we was intended, the last meeting of that committee took place before June 9th. So that the opportunity should be exercised to present to the board on the last I don't know. I can't think of the committee if they're ready to do that. And if not, then you have to.
And I know we talked about this last time, but it is not anticipated that there will be action at that meeting on June 9th, or that there will be action. I'm sure that that meeting is resulted at that time. It's just information sharing that's coming.
I don't want to speak on behalf of the board or the committee, but I don't know that any action will be again, when we, the timeline that we shared, our current goal, it can be adjusted, but our current goal would be to have information to build a referendum next May when the school budget moves to a referendum. And the, should we decide move forward with any building project, the application to the state is due June 30th, maybe June 30th or 46th. That's, those are the two kind of deadlines, if you will, that we would have to hit. Anything prior to those two would be good in the board's performance.
Any other questions on Mr. Smith's report? Next, we have board member comments. And next, we have comments from citizens. The Board of Education will recognize this is the Middlebury and Southbury and says to grass to state their name, their count of residents, and to limit their comments to three minutes. One citizen, no? And next, we have regular business requiring board action. May I have a motion for approval of policy 1180, memorials for deceased students and staff?
Move that the Board of Education, on recommendation of the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approve policy 1180, memorials for deceased students and staff as presented.
Any discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor? Any nades? Any extensions? Next, may I have a motion for approval of the 2025-2026 tuition rates? Move that the Board of Education, on recommendation by the Finance and Facilities Committee, approve the 2025-2026 tuition rates as presented. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments? In the tuition rates?
They were, well, they were approved by.
Yes.
They were approved by finance and the fiscal audit. Yeah, they both had a sense of budget.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor? Any nades? Any extensions? It's unanimous. Next, may I have a motion for approval of the 2025- 2026 lunch and breakfast prices. And the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Finance and Facilities Committee, approved the 2025-2026 lunch and breakfast prices as presented. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Any questions or comments about this?
Prices and then there's some columns. A 25 cent increase source approved by finance and a 10 cent increase in breakfast. The column first examples on the increases. 25%.
But 20. Numbers don't have.
There's 20, 25, 30.
Right, but lunch price elementary is 3.35, but both of the 25 cents. I think the columns didn't get shifted.
Was, it was corrected.
I just.
I'm assuming finance and discuss value of all the different
Yeah.
Possible increases and looks free to, or you know, can't raise it so high that it's too high to stop to cover across. Just in the discussion.
We, we want to put this off to June 9th? Or if you want to like change it?
But I do have another question. Since it's on here. Can you tell us a little bit about the projected shortfalls and what that means for the district?
Sure. So the $64,000 are current, current year shortfall. Last year, we left lunch prices flat. Where there was, breakfast was free in that prior year. Most conversation on the state on funding, so we left those flat. There was a a decent surplus inside the lunch account, so we thought of food and whole prices. And doing that, obviously, it snowballed. So the 64,000 is the current year loss, which will be offset by the balance inside school lunch. And the $52,000 total cost, that's next year's. Those are some examples of increases that are coming. Two cents and the paper trays, the price of milk, about a penny, penny eight, and two and a half cents in general food costs, and those are your health insurance or your labor increases. So if the board took no action, the program will lose about $117,000 next year. Because the 64 snowballs with 52. But if you go 25 cents, your revenue will go up to $72,000. So you'll have a, you'll still be running the deficit piece, but we thought, you know, up too much on families, so hopefully we'll probably another, hard to say, 10 or 15 cents following year, kind of keep, keep up with inflation.
Yeah, I just want to add, this is a self-funded program, so that deficit comes from the program itself. We don't offset that deficit from the general operator fund. The reserves that are in the lunch program and the reserves that cover that.
So how are those reserves funded?
So the short answer is we built up a good amount of reserves during COVID when everything's fully subsidized. And so that fund, when we run a profit, so to speak, it goes into that fund. We don't actually ever run a profit. It's a break-even program. So in the year that we have surplus, it goes. So, in the year that we have surplus, it goes into the reserves, and the years of COVID, we had surpluses because we were. Remember even times sending take home lunches um to students, and because it was free for everybody, our use of material costs, and we built some reserves. So these reserves are significant enough to withstand a couple of years, we can't live in a deficit for five or six years. But you feel that um doing it in one year would be um problematic and a big increase to families, so by smoothing that. We kind of reduce our shortfall each year while it's at a cost.
Am I correct in remembering that prior to COVID? We were close to break even or were we?
We were, so um in twenty eighteen, when I arrived, you're running, I wanna say it was about sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, deficit, we brought that to break even, um, and then during COVID, we had surplus there. Which had been able, we've used that to repair it.
So that surplus is getting us through these next couple of years, but the goal is to work back to, yeah, to a break even, yeah.
So, so what's the anticipate, um? Deficit my year?
Uh, next year will be.
Subsidy minus seventy.
Yeah, uh, one seventeen minus seventy four, thirty, thirty nine, I think, so. Uh, it'll be about. About forty five thousand next year. With twenty five percent bump.
Do we get any subsidies from the federal government?
Yeah, you get. Uh, the healthy hunger free motion you just passed, you got eleven cents per meal on that, plus obviously you get. A reversal percentage of that, I believe it's about forty five cents or so per meal, then obviously, the pre-reduced kids are a different metric.
Now, is that taken into account from the cost?
Is this twenty five cents or twenty five percent? All right, so um. Since I, I get, wanted to say just till next, so Heather, do you wanna do a motion to table? Um, this motion until our June ninth meeting?
Move that the Board of Education table. Approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six lunch and breakfast prices. To be discussed at the June ninth.
Thank you, do you have a second? Thank you, Tom, um, any discussion? All those in favor? Hi, any needs? Any extensions? All right, next, we have a motion for approval of the region fifteen technology lease. Move that the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Finance and Facilities Committee approved the region fifteen technology lease. You have a, you have a second? Second, thank you, Heather. Um, Joe, do you wanna talk on that really quick?
Uh, for your technology lease, it's two hundred and forty thousand dollars, the primary, the Chromebooks, uh, Smartboards, and uh new projected future equipment. Same built-in budget, it lowers the renewal of the prior lease we had, so one's all off.
So, increase or decrease from last year?
Same, a little bit increase in the interest rate, cause like the old rate was probably about a percent and a half, so new rates will be higher, but yeah.
Right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Any needs, any extensions? All right, it's unanimous. And next we have a motion for approval of the May twenty twenty five transfer entry.
Move that the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Finance and Facilities Committee approved the May twenty twenty five transfer entry for various projects district wide. In the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand as presented, thank you, Heather, a second?
Second, thank you, Heather. All right, Joe, can you talk about this?
Sure, that's the surplus dollars inside your debt service account, um, those are the result of. A modification made in the budget last year, and also the Long Meadow debt paying off, and the smaller payment in the band will be rolled over.
All right, any questions?
Okay, so I know you went over this in, in finance, but there was less than there, um, as I look at the project list. So could you talk about? These columns, what encumbered versus non-encumbered, and. How that determine how? You know, we determine which of these projects are definitely getting done versus is there anything here that's listed on?
Sure, everything on the list right now is moving forward, um, the only. Oh, there you go. The, there's a piece of Rochambeau on the um. The H P C, the, the thermostat controls, that's about ninety five thousand dollars, that's not encumbered as of yet, the. And also the tennis courts at Memorial, that bid will close on, in the fifth of June. Uh, high school side, everything is encumbered. Currently, uh, and. Six, four, four here, Rochambeau, that's open. This gym stuff isn't in new budget, tennis courts are obviously pending the bid. Middlebury Elementary, the, the heating system, especially classroom, we just received some additional pricing on that actually this morning. And the. We've not officially set the design up for that, um. The side entry had the week last year kind of closed that better, and nurses room, so those are still open for incumbents. And the. Bring out, bring out playground area at Long Meadow. This is not, is not any comforting. Those are, those are, it's open.
Okay, so uh, by that question, what I mean is, um. So, all these numbers add up to more than three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so maybe could you take us through how these are all being paid for?
Sure.
What funds these?
Primarily, these are coming, these are coming out of your, your current capital. Your current capital account you have, which was, current budget is spot. Five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so it's currently coming out of, out of that account, and also you have, you have surplus inside others in the budget, I assume, so the special ed, tuition lines, salary lines. Those areas.
So, you know, when I look back at other monthly financial reports. There, there were encumbrances against that capital prior to, prior to this, so those. Are these projects or were those other projects?
There's some projects against that, there's the uh camera system upgrades that were done, the Middlebury Elementary, the um. All of the major leak we had, that was hundred thousand dollars, your feasibility studies encumbered in there as well. Um, and the lighting upgrade that was done at the high school. Those are at least the large ones I can think of, the same.
So, when I add up the columns, it seems like it's more than a million dollars worth of projects. If I add up what we had start the year in capital versus plus three hundred and ninety. As it seems like there's more projects here than taking our capital account, plus the three hundred and ninety we're about to transfer in.
Yeah.
So how is the balance of these projects being?
Now, also the price will come from, as you kinda cited, there's special ed lines that are running and a very healthy surplus this year. You do have some surpluses up inside your salary accounts. Um, you know, as we've said, Capri line, it's been a pretty decent year, we're still, I believe, last finance report about eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, to the good, there's still, you know, two, two months left of pieces to book out, um, but yeah, that's.
So you would anticipate to complete the entirety of this project list, that we would have to make another transfer down the line from other hands?
Yeah, that's what we did last year, okay.
So then the last question I would have is, I was brought to the board's attention earlier this year, that as we look at our reserve accounts. We're pretty low in terms of, you know, by comparison of other regional districts. So we're committing to a big pot of projects here. What will that uh be left over for potential, and then we're transferring some tonight?
Yeah.
Something, but that was from last budget year, not this current budget year, so. What will that leave us to potentially transfer, and are we gonna have room to have that discussion? Because some people were very concerned about how low that number is, and this is, this seems to be the time to speak up, if you wanna bump that up a million dollars, like, the money's here. If we ever have that discussion, or is there any preference to?
Yeah.
Wanna talk about it?
Discussion was, I think, particularly the four hundred and seventeen thousand, the excess cost dollars, the idea of at least starting kind of with that floor, I think, of moving those dollars up right now, that was kind of discussed amongst the board. Uh, yeah, we'd like to throw that higher as well, I need the, you know, one of the challenges, again, to your end. Um, if you have additional teacher retirements, there's severance payouts, so we have to book in those sort of things that don't, aren't in pain covered yet, but yeah, I think the goal is to definitely, as we all. Kind of surprised, including myself, on where we stacked up against our peers in reserve.
Said, and it's also why it's staged, it comes to rate from the end, um, and there is a. Cost value, a cost benefit, that a lot of these projects, if we didn't do them now, and put the money into reserve, and you take the money out of reserve to fix the thing to the wrong. Not all of them.
Yeah.
But some of them, so some of what we're trying to do is clear the back. Uh, as many kind of smaller projects, as you build that, um. We need one more month of financials, uh, while that four seventeen, we expect from the state. Uh, we now at least have a letter from them.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, it's, it's moving in the right direction, but.
Can you pass the letter?
You can't cash that, the, the letter that we have, uh, so I think that we've been, you know, cautiously optimistic. Um, some of these, if we wait too long, you're gonna miss the summer window, so there is kind of a, um, proposition here of how soon we transfer, and when we start versus. Um, when we wait to begin the year, we waited till June ninth, for all of these, we would have missed like big opportunities. So, uh, that's the phased transfer approach.
And the final question is, I appreciate. The ability to knock out as many of these as we could. Given the, the number we have to draw from. Um, some of these are non-operational concerns. And as we talk about, you know, HVAC units, I, I love that we have a plan on how to address the roofing, looking liabilities we have.
Yes.
We haven't really talked about that with HVAC, this seems like this could have been a year, if you wanted to do a half million dollar HVAC unit. The money would be there, but we're choosing to spend on smaller projects, was there any discussion about addressing more HVAC projects and? If we're not doing it this year, are we talking about a more phased approach moving forward on addressing those units?
Yeah, we engaged several petricelli, particularly on the auditorium unit to study, there's grant dollars that we have kind of hanging in the bond related to that. The challenge is with the, what is now called R four five four is the latest refrigerant that exists, so a lot of your houses are auto four ten A. So there's a big conversion over to compressed land, so we try and actually even get, that will get teed up for next summer, for example, that unit possibly others up on the roof, you're looking at some economies of scale up there. Yeah, um, yeah, that'll be kind of more, but yeah, we were, we're hopefully at the auditorium done, that there's a design issue up there, and there's another, um, new unit has, there's new load capacity and wind and everything else, so. Um, there's a little more design work that they were bumping into. Yeah, there is idea to study more of the roof and kind of get, knock off more units up there and go up.
With the scale that, so all of this, this is the building we talked most about, because they have the most and largest impact systems. Uh, but similar, the other schools have aging systems, and it's not, like, we're gonna go buy a new one, it's an engineering study. Um, I'm, again, I wake up every day optimistic, but um, there's been a lot of talk about additional legislation and grant opportunities where. Um, we may, similar to what we did with the cameras, we may have to front the money, but then we'll get uh reimbursement, so, great, right?
Yeah. Yeah, also the, obviously, the Long Meadow parking lot study that will have for next, hopefully, possibly within that next summer as well, uh, that's under study. Um, this summer.
So it's, uh, is it fair to say we're using the silver purchase selling HVAC study? We'll take those results and use those as a springboard to maybe establishing the plan for beginning to address some of those expectations?
Yes, cause there's like four fan rooms up top that are very similar in design.
I hesitate, I just, it's like, Joe, I just, yes, yes, but, yeah, I would say like, that's true for the units that they're studying at high school.
Right, yeah.
I think, you know, what that will do is maybe springboard a conversation to every school system is somewhat unique.
Yeah.
Um, and while you can extrapolate some of it, it's not gonna necessarily make it a district-wide.
Yeah.
I don't wanna hold up progress on this list, but I'll just note that, like, this is the rare year where you have to place a half million dollar HVAC unit, that we have the money to do it.
Yeah.
So you could transfer five hundred into a capital reserve fund, and then when you need it in year two, put it down, knowing that we're moving there.
Yeah, I, I did, it is. Josh, our, our goal to transfer in that neighborhood into, into the, at, at expense, with the idea of at least that, I call it like the four. Four hundred and eleven thousand being kind of the baseline will open.
And just, yeah, we'll click on. This goes to the next one also, with that new policy, we can put away two percent total for special ed and or capital.
Yeah, but only two percent in total, yes.
Right, right, yeah, so the um. What's that dollars?
About, um, mil- uh, million eight.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I deserve.
Quick questions, quick answers, three of them, um, and we're, we're talking about the, the, the attachment. As it relates, I guess, to these transfers, so just, just finance to discuss, like, what's on this list and whether or not. Except that, it just came up, okay, thank you. Um, the tennis courts, I was at M M S for the tour, so I understood what the need was with the tennis courts, is this just the, I guess, repaving, is that?
Yeah, re- re- repaving, new fencing, uh, we had, we had prepaid me, we had three bidders, all, all local contractors, hoping it's not a crazy payment. Yeah, payment and, and.
And clarify, we're not, you saw like tennis.
Of course, I understood, yeah, it's just another space, basic. Uh, and then, um, the L M A S playgrounds. Um, I saw some scuttle, but.
Yes.
Uh, perhaps things were broken, is this, there was some sort of, um. Fixing things that are broken.
Yeah, um, it was ironic, we were out there. I feel like before that, that kind of became a post, we were out there doing a, we priced the, the front section, but yeah, we have a broken slide there already, there's about thirteen thousand to repair. And there's kind of two big chunks of the playground. And the front chunk, we're looking at the idea, that has the most, that has the most issues right now, so we're actually skip pricing, hopefully next week or so, on what that is, P T Os. And kind of figured that, that, all that playground was bought by the district when Long Meadow was built, so just around that, but we are, P T Os does have. The whole funding, I haven't met directly with them yet, so I'm gonna speak for them, but I think they will talk a little more about some of the.
It's a twenty something year old system, so, right, they don't make that, you can't just go by the slide that's broken and replace it, because they no longer make it, and the safety code that was in place when that was constructed is no longer. Uh, in place, so it doesn't make sense to. Try to retrofit the slide onto, so that's kind of a negotiation with P T Os, that some of it is on us. The fix was broken, but in the upgrading it, it's a good opportunity to do that, it's just.
Is that, that's not, that's not, that's not, that wasn't, that, that kind of came to light in the last three weeks, so.
We know how it was broken.
Just age, some of it, some of it, there's a, there's a rubber, there's a kind of a, a bridge that goes over, and like, all the rubber's cracking off and stuff, there's a lot of, just the slide itself is cracked. Um, yeah, there's.
It wasn't like a catalyst event, or?
Yeah.
No, there's, there's caution tape.
Yeah, there's screen, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll clean up.
Okay, any other questions or comments? On the motion for transferring group? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any needs? Any extensions? All right, unanimous, thank you. Uh, next we have a motion for approval of the transfer of the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four year end balance of. Two hundred and thirty two thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars into the educational expense account.
Move that the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Finance and Facilities Committee approved the transfer of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four year end balance of two hundred and thirty two thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Into the newly created educational expense.
If you have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Tom, um. And self-explanatory, any questions or comments about this?
Bring your balance between the capital reserve and the other, it's about one point three million.
On the same account, and they're gonna benefit from.
Yeah, you have a million in capital, what, the capital account, and you have about the three hundred, two hundred and thirty two thousand on that.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any needs? Any extensions? All right, it's unanimous. Uh, next we have announcement of future meetings on Wednesday, June fourth. Um, we have our moving up between E S P E S feasibility study committee. Here at the High School Media Center at five o'clock. Um, the eighteen ninth P N C meeting is not happening. Um, but we do have the Monday, June ninth, regular Board of Education meeting here at High School Media Center at seven thirty. They have a motion to move into executive session.
Move that the Board of Education breaks into executive session to discuss to grant headings contract and to invite. Turn with Jessica Smith and having meeting with possible action, thank you, do you have a second?
Second. Into salary, um, all those in favor?
All right.
Any needs, any extensions? Come, come, that wasn't a name, right? Unanimous, thank you.